Good evening and welcome to the inaugural 7:05 PM start time for our Parkway Board of Education meetings. Maybe we should have thought of that when we changed the start time last time. Anyway, would you all please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Applebaum, Mr. Applebaum, Ms. Jacob.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Mulgeman.
Here.
Dr. Sutino.
There.
Here. A special recognitions tonight, there are none. Additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. There is a modification to the personnel section. Five point zero citizen statements, there are none tonight. Six point zero call for closed meeting, none. And seven point zero approval of agenda for September 11th, 2013. May I please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Resolutions, none tonight. Communications, calendar of meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednes-
Monday.
No, it's scheduled for Thursday, September 19th.
It's a special meeting.
Oh, that's a special-
We haven't called for it yet.
Okay, never mind. Sorry. Monday, September 30th at Central Middle School at 7:00 PM, preceded by the 6:30 PM tax rate hearing. Nine point zero two, board liaison reports. Tonight, we're going to add a little something to our reports real quickly, and we're going to each take a turn. So who would like to begin? Mrs. Mulgeman.
Well, we have a very special person to the board that will be retiring in how many days? Don't throw those daggers at me. Not that she's counting, but this is my 10th year on the board, and Mrs. Colanda is probably the first person that helped me guide, helped guide me through the district. And you learn real fast as a board member who really runs this district, and you learn that you need to be real nice to her. No, honestly, she's a great asset to the board. She works incredibly long hours. She's at work probably by 6:00 or 6:15 every morning, even when she's here till 2:00 in the morning with the board, she's at, which doesn't happen often, but no matter what time, she's there in the morning when school starts. She's a real professional. She has gotten us through lots. She keeps us out of jail, as I say, make sure we follow that sunshine law. And we're just really going to miss her. Not only is she a great help, but she's a great friend. And we're going to miss her.
Yeah, I don't know what I would have done if Carol wasn't helping me out and holding my hand through so many things.
Texting.
It was-
She held your hand?
Or drug me along, whichever way you put it. And really, helped me out through some hectic times, learning the ropes, you know, because there's a protocol that you should follow. So it was really easy with someone like that to help.
Well, I think extraordinary organizations are extraordinary because of extraordinary people. And certainly Carol's involvement. And long before I got to play in this outfit, and you talk to people who've been here, been on the board in years past, and there is no doubt that the glue, the sounding board, the reality check has been at that end of the table. And we're going to miss you terribly, ma'am. And as a fellow South Area attendance resident, we'll see you around the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I've probably known Carol longer than anyone. Worked with her in a lot of different capacities over the years. And Carol has been the glue that's kept this district together in many, many ways. She's worked with so many different superintendents, some great and some not so great in the past. Never complains.
All great.
They were all great at the time, but I think she's looking back at it now and saying, "I'm not sure."
Sam's writing.
But I've had the pleasure of working with her for so many years, and her pleasant attitude, her smiles, her generous help and support. And I'm like, Tom, I'm a pretty busy person right now in my life, and I get these calls from Carol just to remind me of things. She doesn't have to do it, but she does it. Both my cellphone, my home phone, and my office phone. But Carol, you've been absolutely wonderful all these years, and so stable, and so positive, and so helpful. You're the archivist of the district. You're the historian, and we're going to miss you terribly. We're going to have a tremendous loss with you not being here to continue with us. But thank you so much.
Carol, I look forward to saying a few things.
Aren't you guys glad we started at 7:00 tonight?
Carol's been our confident, our teacher, our mentor. And I guess in many ways, she's been our mother too, and kept us fed and got us to places on time, and made our life much easier for us as board members, not only present but past ones. So I know that I speak for myself and for every current and past board member that how wonderful it is to work with somebody like that. Along the way, I have learned a few Carolisms that I'd like to share with you. Carol is a dog lover. She has two.
Three.
Three. Which is one of the reasons why she says it's no accident that man's best friend can't speak. If you think about that for a minute. And I just want to help you to understand, you're not there yet, but Joan Rivers, when she was 79 years old, was asked about the accomplishments that she had been able to have in her life. You see, Joan, when you look in the mirror, and she said, "My mother's friends." So that's something you can look forward to later. Here's some things that Carol has shared over the years. Whoever said that money can't buy friends obviously never brought bagels to this office. The brain is a wonderful organ. It starts working the moment you get up and does not stop until you get to the office. Don't ask me to think, this was for Mark. Don't ask me to think, Mark, I was hired for my looks. Chaos, panic, and disorder. My work here is almost done. A woman has to do twice as much as a man to be considered half as good. Fortunately, this isn't difficult. And she's finally, a nice one here, she panned a little bit about my job. It's not my place to run the train. The whistle, I cannot blow. It's not my place to say how far the train is allowed to go. It's not my place to shoot off steam nor ever clang the bell, but let the damn thing jump the track and see who catches hell. So, thank you.
Once again, I find myself following Chris Jig. That was wit. I keep doing that to myself. Anyway, Carol, first of all, from Kim Applebaum, who I believe is watching us tonight on the livestream from Chicago, she said to raise a glass to you, so that's from Kim. And for me, I want to tell everybody the real truth, which is we get a lot of memos from all of you, and a lot of reports, and a lot of presentations, but when we really want to know what's going on in the district, all we have to do is call or visit Carol. Because she has kept her fingers on the pulse of this district like no other. It's just amazing, her contacts and her, her just, she knows. She is just a great, great resource for us. So, when Carol's gone, we still would love to hear from you. It might have to be a little bit more direct than it's been these past few years, because I don't think Nikki's going to have time taking on the board and Dr. Marty. But we wish you well in your retirement. Bruce is recruiting you to join any future campaign efforts that the district puts on, because we know that you've got a wonderful work ethic, and you'll work really hard to do anything you can to take this district to the next level. Thank you for everything. Keep-
Before Carol responds, I just want to just offer a few perspectives. And still being relatively new to Missouri and Parkway, I agree with the comments about the resource, because Carol was helpful from day one. She continues to have, you know, a lot of things that are very, very helpful in terms of history and things that we've done in the past. And that's so valuable when you think about the work that you can, you can learn real quickly that you can make some wrong turns. And so that's very, very important. She knows the community. She knows a lot of the work that's been done in the past. So she's been certainly, as many of you said, such a valuable resource. When you work in a district or work in one place 28 years, you certainly have come across a lot of people. And she has, I think she's still trying to count board members and superintendents. And I know where I'm in that rating of superintendents, she'll probably write a book someday about all the people she worked with. I just want to say, she is in early in the morning. I get there pretty early, and she's there as early or shortly after, and does a lot of work. Sometimes our major communication is between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning. We get a lot of work done in the morning, and I really appreciate that, and it's really helped get the day started. And finally, I think one of the real compliments that I just really feel very positive about, in the last several weeks, months, we've been transitioning to the work that Nikki's going to take on. And I think initially Carol was wondering, what do I have to pass on? And I think I speak for Nikki. Carol's been a wonderful resource. She's passed on so many ideas and tips, and just important information that'll make Nikki's work important. Already, as I think Nikki feels, much more confident than she probably did two months ago. So Carol, thank you for really sharing and being supportive, and really helping, you know, really the work of the district continue. And there may be phone calls too, I'm sure, from Nikki, me, and board members in the future. Thank you so much. You have a chance to speak.
That's fine. All right, great. Do we have any more traditional liaison reports? Anybody wants to share?
Attended the Rockwood Board meeting last-
Thursday.
Thursday. Right. That was the Bronco game. I was two hours late for kickoff, but we have technology for that. Oh, sorry. Anyway, saw the presentation on the community ed, and certainly well received by the Rockwood Board. Looking forward to our, they also had their Drug Free Schools Coalition do a presentation, so we probably ought not to refer to our meeting next week as a joint Parkway-Rockwood meeting. But in any event, the meeting where we're going to approve the plan, I'm looking forward to.
I got a chance to sit in on a panel with the president of MNEA and a teacher from Normandy, and talked about some of the issues with regards to student transfer. It was an enlightening conversation. This is at the Crete Core Government Center.
Okay, I guess we've been a bit of a buzz lately. We're just going to move on.
We just keep meeting so often.
Right. Ten point oh action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the action items as listed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Oh, are there any to be polled? No? Action items now, there are none. Twelve point zero policy review, none tonight. And thirteen point oh one of Parkway-Rockwood Community Education Partnership. I'd like to call on Paul Tandy, Parkway Director of Communications, Mark Stockwell, Parkway CFO, and Mike Seppi, Rockwood Director of Community Education.
Well, good evening, President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, and for the last time, Ms. Colanda. We're really pleased to be here tonight to present to you what we hope is a final report. We're not asking for any action tonight, but want to give you a final update on the progress of the possible partnership in community ed between Parkway and Rockwood.
Paul?
Yes.
Sorry, before you start, I'd like to mention, I should have mentioned this before, Mr. Matt Dole, representing the Rockwood Board, we welcome you. Thanks for joining us tonight. Okay, sorry.
So, again, like I said, tonight, we're not asking for any action. This is just a final update and report to you. This is, these are the items we're going to cover briefly for you tonight. And again, the purpose is to determine whether a partnership between the two districts in our community education programs would better serve the interest of our residents in a manner that is fiscally responsible and provides more opportunities for them in terms of lifelong learning and community education than the current practice of operating separate distinct programs. We did talk about this previously. We've added some more work that we've done recently. As you recall, this has been about an 18-month process. We've been talking together about this for some time. We did meet initially with some experts to give us some advice and consultation. They did study the two programs and gave us some input into the feasibility of a potential partnership. We have had extensive meetings with representatives of both districts in a number of areas, including things such as communications, finance, human resources, legal, and on and on. We've had a number of meetings, including at your direction this past summer, as you know, we held some, what you might call focus groups, listening sessions at one of the high schools where we had not only school administrators and staff, but also we had patrons, participants of the various programs in community education who also came in and listened to the presentation and gave us their input. And of course, we've been working most recently with our legal councils to draft up the draft agreement, which you have, I know, in your packet before you. We do believe that by partnering together, that we can provide a broader scope of programs and services to the residents of both communities. We do believe as well that we can do it in a fiscally responsible manner, actually being more efficient by doing so. As you know, we were looking at some expansion of some of our services and programs in Parkway, and this would allow us to do that in much more quickly, quick manner, and a much more efficient manner. And we do believe, as we've talked to others around the state and the country, that this type of a partnership could be a model for others, particularly in times when we have lean budgets and we need to be wise about how we offer programming. These are not tax-supported programs, so we have to balance the budget through the revenue stream from the fees that we collect. This is our famous wait-for-it slide. And we'll see if you can find Valley Park in there. I hope you can see the blue dots, but as we've mentioned before, those are the locations of our schools. And, you know, we're talking a couple hundred geographic square miles, a lot of community-based locations where we can offer services and programs for our community. And I've joked at Walgreens, we'd love to have that kind of coverage with that many local locations. Actually, they probably do. Okay, into some of the specifics of what we will be bringing to you on the 19th. If such a partnership is approved, it would begin with the 2014-15 school year. The areas that we would like to begin with, first starting with recreation, meaning enrichment, recreational sports, visual performing arts. We would implement, we recommend implementing the e-hour model that Rockwood currently has after school for enrichment, that we would implement that in Parkway. We would also, on the sort of the reverse side, we would begin offering the variety of adult enrichment programming that Parkway currently offers that's not available in Rockwood. That will be then available in both communities. We would be recommending in recreational sports to begin a joint youth basketball league. Been very successful in Rockwood, had a lot of interest in Parkway. In fact, we have a fair number of Parkway students who already participate in that league. And that would get our kids to have opportunity to play basketball in their gyms in their schools and expand that league. School age childcare, we would be recommending adopting the Adventure Club model, and we would recommend a phased-in approach. So, first year, 2014-15, we're going to recommend half of our 18 elementary schools. So nine in Parkway, and of course, the 19 in Rockwood would continue. The Babler Outdoor Education Center, if you've never been there, it's a great resource that's available. And through the partnership, it'd be available to all Parkway patrons and school district, and a very close, nice facility there that we could take advantage of. Couple of areas that would retain autonomy throughout the partnership, at least for the initial three years, would be aquatics and adult ed and literacy. The swim clubs, due to their competitive nature, as we met with both the coaches and the boosters, it was evident that they would prefer to remain separate entities, so we want to honor that. As well as with adult ed and literacy, those are state-funded programs. And in talking with the state administrators in Jefferson City, they would prefer that those maintain distinct identities. For now, they're just beginning a three-year grant cycle for those programs anyway, and so that makes sense to us for that. So that's 14-15, 15-16 and beyond. I think one of the great things about it is that first bullet, and that is TBD. And what that means is that we can't tell you right now what other programs that we might begin to offer in years two and three and four, but that's the exciting part, I think, with the potential there. There are a lot of things that I know Mike and his team have thought about doing, and perhaps weren't quite ready to do it because they weren't sure they'd have the, you know, the interest level. And now we've got, you know, a quarter of a million residents and nearly 200 square miles of patrons that we can serve. And so I think there's a lot of possibilities there that we can look at for years down the road. For school age childcare, that would be a three-year phase-in. So for 2015-16, we would not see any change, at least for our nine sites. And then in 2016 and 17 would be the year that we would recommend phasing in the final nine. And you might ask, why would you not phase it in over two years instead of three? As Mike has explained, they really need to get one full year under their belt of experience. And because of the nature of the way you begin soliciting and recruiting, you really wouldn't have one full year under your belt before you'd start planning for your second year. So we're recommending essentially it'd be a three-year phase-in. Years one and three would be the years where we would be rotating our schools in. So for those, for year two, 2015-16, we would have half the schools in the Adventure Club and half through the Y Club. Again, aquatics and adult ed, they would remain separate entities, so no changes for them. In terms of communications, we would begin to publish one consolidated program guide and send it to the residents of both communities instead of mailing and sending two separate publications. We have secured already a website, as you can see, prcommunityed.com. That would be the published website for the Parkway-Rockwood Community Ed program. It would then point, once you go there, it would point to a Rockwood server and the current site for Rockwood's Community Ed program. And we would utilize the online registration software that Rockwood currently has. You've seen some of the branding ideas before. This is the logos and the mark. You'll notice the change basically is to add Parkway and Rockwood, Community Ed at the top, and the main logo. If you look in the main C of Community Ed, if you look closely in there, you should see a P and an R. And at the same time, you should see two paths joining together. And for greatness, right, with a star. At this time, I'm going to ask Mark Stockwell, our Chief Financial Officer, to come up and discuss the finances with you. Mark?
Good evening. I think you're all aware that these programs are fully self-supporting programs, meaning no tax dollars are used to fund any of the programs. Basically, all the revenues generated from them then go back into them and pay for the costs associated with them. As far as the management of this program, Rockwood is going to serve as the fiscal agent for the program. And that means that they're basically going to hire the staff, pay the bills, administer the programs. The only exceptions to that are the Parkway Adult Education Literacy Program and the Parkway Swim Club. The revenues that are generated from these programs will continue to flow through to each of the individual districts. And the revenue distribution process ensures that each district is only responsible for the expenses associated with the resident, their own residents' participations in the programs. And you'll see what I mean a little bit later on the presentation. And this last bullet is kind of tied to the fact that when you create a partnership like this, it can be kind of tricky to develop a program that basically protects both of the organizations involved. I mean, you have to develop an agreement that basically makes sure that no one is going to be harmed through the agreement in the future. And early on in the process, there were some concerns raised about how does one organization being the fiscal agent impact that organization either favorably or unfavorably. And as a result of that, there was some language added that basically protects, I think, Rockwood as the fiscal agent from things like unemployment insurance after some of the employees leave the program. And then also it allows them to recoup costs associated with liability insurance and things like that through the Missouri United Insurance Council program. This screen is a little difficult to read, but what I'll share with you very quickly. The program revenues, total program revenues for the joint program are projected to be for the first year about $10.5 million. The direct program operating expenses are about just under $10 million. So there's a projected operating surplus first year of about $531,000. Now, what we also need to, we've broken out from there are what we call the indirect costs. And those are costs that each district will incur as a result of participating in this program. Basically, the indirect hiring costs, the cost for processing payments for the program, for hiring staff, for processing paychecks. Those are charged back to the program by each district based on an overhead rate that's actually developed or provided to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Both districts currently charge their programs, their community education programs in their own districts this charge already. But it allows us to basically recoup some of the costs associated with managing these self-supporting programs. And I guess one could look at it and consider these as basically as a form of revenue for the district. Again, it's money coming into the district to fund operating costs that aren't, that isn't coming from property taxes or other local taxes. But if you look at the last column, you'll see that even after deducting the direct program expenses and the indirect program expenses, the projected first-year operating surplus is around $262,000. And on this next screen, you can see again that the, this part where I wanted to share, the two bottom, or the four bottom shaded areas there show that Rockwood's indirect cost that they're going to receive from these programs is about $206,000. And their net surplus, or the revenues to be distributed to them after the first year, is about $233,000. Now, when you look at Parkway's, ours is much lower. It's $62,700 for indirect costs, and it's only $28,000 in surplus revenues that'll be distributed to Parkway. The reason theirs is much higher than ours is they're primarily, it's their Adventure Club, the size of their Adventure Club program. I mean, we're doing nine schools, they're doing, I believe it's 18, 19 schools. So they have a much larger participation in the program. And remember, I mentioned earlier, the revenue distribution is based on the volume of participation of each community's residents in the programs. So basically, from my perspective, our programs, our community education programs have been self-supporting, you know, throughout time and up to this point. You'd expect that they would continue to be- You'd expect that they would continue to be self-supporting. The projections suggest that they will be. The one thing I do want to share that's not included in this report is that because we're going to be starting up a before-and-after-school program that's currently run by the YMCA, we will have some startup costs that aren't included in this. And that'll be, you know, desks, mats, things like that that we'll have to purchase in the first year. But we do believe that there are sufficient funds in our community education accumulated revenues up to this point to fund those. So from my perspective, it's a great opportunity for us to move forward, to be more efficient, to provide better services to our parents and citizens and the students in our community. And I do believe it will be a win for us on a financial perspective in the long run, but I also believe that that's probably a secondary benefit of this. Thank you.
So if we have net revenue available at the end of fiscal year, where does it go? Several places, and that's what's outlined on this slide. First of all, we would reinvest them in other programming. As the years go on, if we see areas of opportunity, there may be some startup costs for some new programs. Another area where we use any net revenue is to reinvest in the facility improvements. And as we've seen and Mike's team has done in Rockwood, as you're using, let's say, the basketball gyms for your programs, you know, you're creating additional wear and tear on those, on that equipment. And what we've seen in Rockwood is they've been able to use the net revenue to help reinvest. For example, to purchasing new backboards, helping to replace gym floors, volleyball stands, secondary field maintenance and so on. So those are excellent ways to reinvest any net proceeds. And the third would be maintain a sufficient fund balance. And that's been consistent with, both Rockwood and Parkway have done that over the years. As Mark alluded to, we do have a fund balance in Parkway because our community ed programs more often than not do end up the year in the black. And right now, we just maintain those funds. And you would want to maintain a certain level of that to ensure you have funds available for any unforeseen expenditures or anticipated revenue shortfalls. Financial implications, long-term, as I mentioned earlier, for Parkway, we can hit the ground running. We can expand our community education offerings for our community day one, and we don't have to spend a lot of time and additional funds with startup costs than what we would have had to do if we'd done it on our own. In the Rockwood community, it provides them with immediate access to expanded programming offerings, as we mentioned, the adult education programming. And also, it helps them reduce some of their overhead, frankly, so that they can do it in a more efficient manner for them. And then for the two communities, we just think it's a good wise move, both financially and just practically, to offer for our residents. And we're doing a lot of the same things for our patrons. And again, as you looked at the maps, we've got schools right next to each other. It just makes sense to us. We've been waiting, as Mike and I have been planning this thing, and kept waiting to find something and some reason not to do it. And we just, you know, we just haven't been able to find any reason, any good reason not As Mark mentioned, Rockwood would be the fiscal agent. It's important to point out that anyone hired under the partnership would become essentially Rockwood employees, with the exception, of course, of adult ed and literacy and swim club. And additionally, there would be some part-time personnel in our buildings that would be supporting our after-school enrichment programming. And the reason they would maintain, we would recommend that they retain their status as a Parkway employee because the people are already working in the buildings typically, and it's an additional responsibility. It doesn't make sense, they'd clock out of Parkway and then clock back into Rockwood just for the few hours they're working for Community Ed. Other than that, they would all be Rockwood employees. At full implementation, we do anticipate approximately 150 or so staff. The majority of those are part-time. And again, primarily Adventure Club. But those have been built into the financial projections that Mark presented. And then Mark mentioned about the language added to the draft agreement that sort of protects really both entities, but for sure, Rockwood is the fiscal agent with people who are working in our buildings. See, we give it to you twice, just in case you didn't catch it the first time. Then we throw the logo on there. Looking ahead, next step. So where we go from here, again, tonight, we're not asking for a decision from you. We do plan to get together jointly with the Rockwood School Board on the 19th, which is coming up very quickly, at Crestview Middle School for a joint meeting. We're going to ask you at that time to consider the partnership for a period of 10 years, if it would begin on July 1, 2014 and run for 10 years. We believe that's the commitment we need to give it the time it needs to be successful. If you do approve it, we've got a lot of work to do and we've got to begin meeting, really immediately, to begin planning some logistical questions and promotion of the new joint partnership. And we do anticipate creating an advisory committee that's in the agreement, that we want to have input from patrons of both school districts and to help us with sort of the strategic direction of the partnership. With that, I'd love to hear any questions or comments you may have.
First of all, the advisory board, will there be a member from each school board, perhaps, on that advisory board or not?
Certainly can be. I don't know, Mike, the agreement doesn't stipulate that, does it? So it sort of keeps it open to us. If that's something that the two boards would like us to put in there, I'm sure that's something we can absolutely do. Yeah.
Secondly, to squelch any rumors. So a Parkway resident approached me early in the summer and said, "So I hear Parkway and Rockwood are merging. What's going on?" No. As far as I know, I haven't heard that. So I just thought that was kind of interesting. And then also, rumor patrol, just I guess to give our parents reassurance that this doesn't involve our sixth-grade camp. We're not moving it to Babler. It's still going to be where it's always been. I just think we need to kind of reassure them just to make sure they don't make that leap and assume that we're changing that program, so.
Good point. Right, yeah, there are no plans to do that. Summer school as well, some people had asked about summer school. That would, you know, remain as-is.
Wow, you've made everyone speechless.
Could be that we've presented this four or five times to you.
You had me at Community Ed.
Well, one last thing I want to say, and I can't emphasize this enough, what a pleasure it's been to work with Mike Seppi. And I can just guarantee you, we would not be here today if it weren't for him and his team. And I'll tell you that through the past 18 months, I've had a chance to work with them, and they are a top-notch group. They understand community education, they live it, it's in their heart, they get it, they get the value of it to our patrons and the community, and they're very, very good at what they do. So if you do decide to enter in this partnership, you're in good hands. Mike will take it where it needs to go on behalf of the patrons of both school districts.
If I may, Paul, before you sit down, I was just thinking, when you said 18 months, because we were trying to figure out when, we thought we were real close to a deal about a year ago. Dr. Marty and I were saying, was it a year or was it two? So it was last year around this time. We thought we were very close to a deal, and then we found out we weren't. And I know that you and Mike had a lot of disappointment over that. And I was really amazed at the way you conducted yourselves as gentlemen and picked yourselves up and dusted yourselves off and found a different way to make this dream happen. So I applaud you for your ability to see light at the end of the tunnel and to know what you were doing was a good thing for all of our kids and all of our patrons. And I really foresee next Thursday night as being a really successful meeting and a positive meeting, and we look forward to joining forces with the board at Rockwood. You can take our message back, and we just look forward to working together. And thank you both, and Mark you as well, for everything that you've put into this.
Thank you, Mrs. Feldman, and Dr. Marty as well. Thanks.
Okay, and speaking of community education, 15.0 call for special meeting. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education?
14.
Oh, sorry. You guys didn't want to talk, did you?
We're trying to make up that five minutes.
All right, let's see. 14.0 work session, sorry, the preliminary discussion on health and PE. Can I call on Ron Ramspot to come on down? And all of his people. His peeps are going to move on up front.
Dr. Meredith?
Good evening.
You were not on my cheat sheet. Welcome.
I am sorry about that. Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, and Ms. Calanda. It is so exciting to think about where we are in program evaluation with curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And if we, I'm going to kind of skip ahead, if we go to this slide here, the curriculum wheel and the impact it has had since we adopted the Parkway mission. This wheel changed as a result of our mission, and all of our curriculum revisions, our assessment revisions, and our instructional practice decisions are now made in light of the Parkway mission. And so if you look at the red area, that is where we are now entering with our health, PE, and outdoor school programs. We are going to begin looking at how do those programs align compared to our mission, our vision, our learning principles and commitments in Parkway. If you notice on down all the way through the yellow, communication arts, science, gifted, ESOL, and social studies have been through this process since our mission. It's pretty exciting to see that we are nearing the halfway point of all of our curricular areas. And so this evening, you will get to hear from Ron Ramspot about an update of where we've been since his last program evaluation, knowing that that was done pre-mission. And so our task ahead of us now is to look at the work, there's been amazing work since the mission done in health and PE, in addition to all the program recommendations that came out of his last program. So for those programs that are going through it, it's combining the multiple work. And so now it's a time for us to stand back and take that formal introduction, our formal study of the work. And so just as a reminder, and we've kept this in here with all of the program evaluations in this part, since the mission vision, that it is about continuous improvement, that we continually need to look at how we improve. And so even though this is the start of the formal evaluation, it will be continuous. And so you will continue to get updates through memos and through interactions with Ron all the way through the process and then even into the implementation. So without further ado, I welcome Ron Ramspot and then Nathan Tyson, so that they can help us begin to understand current reality and focus our research for the program evaluation.
Thank you. Good evening. President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, thank you for the comment on outdoor school, the clarification. Ms. Calanda, Dr. Marty, members of the board. Well, Lisa had her quote, so I'm going to bring mine into play here. Being that this is a health and physical education presentation and discussion, I thought it would be appropriate to include a quote from the former U.S. Surgeon General way back, the late C. Everett Coop. Dr. Coop said that "The best prescription is knowledge," meaning that the best prevention or cure for poor health is knowledge about health. In tonight's context, this quote speaks to our need to know more about the students we teach in health and physical education, and ways we can have a more positive impact on their health behaviors. The best prescription for enhancing our health and physical education program is to better understand what makes these courses effective and valuable to the Parkway students, community, and greater communities. I had composed six artifacts, which were included in a report that was sent to you last week, which hopefully provided you with both the historical perspective and the current realities of the Parkway Health and Physical Education programs. We have made a lot of progress since 2005-06, the year of our last program evaluation. I have been fortunate to be able to see this work through. This is my 10th year in Parkway. And especially proud of what we have accomplished, some of that which was shared in the report. Some of the highlights include the merging of the health education and physical education departments, the adoption of a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which now includes learning targets and transfer goals, the development of both formative and summative common assessments to measure progress towards these learning goals, and most notably, the evolution of the role of the health and physical education teachers in our schools, not only being the instructors of both content areas, but also playing a role in school wellness, academic achievement, and whole child development. We have also made great strides with health-related fitness, improving student fitness scores in virtually every area tested since our last program evaluation in 2005-06. Included in the artifacts that were presented was also our proposed goals, which I will share with you in a few slides, focus areas and guiding questions, which Mr. Nate Tyson will share with you in a few minutes. We will certainly be seeking the perspective of all stakeholders in our district. We will also be seeking both internal and external perspectives. One such external expert we have sought in the health and PE profession, is a health and PE professional right in our own community, Dr. Amanda Stanek. Dr. Stanek recently moved to the Parkway School District and lives in the Mason Ridge attendance area. She brings an international perspective to the evaluation process and has extensive experience in the field of physical health education, as they refer to the profession in Canada. Eh? That was my Canada. Okay, it didn't go as well as I practiced.
Do us a little warning next time.
She actually was involved in developing Canada's national physical health education standards. She will be a great asset to our evaluation team. In addition to Dr. Stanek's input and professional perspective, we will also be seeking parent and community perspectives at Project Parkway meetings in September and November. We already have a group of 40-plus parents who have committed to attending those evenings, which will represent over 80% of our Parkway School communities, and I hope that will get even higher. We also plan to study model practices and programs, which will help challenge our thinking and help us achieve the health and academic outcomes we desire. Many of the goals that we have developed for this program evaluation extend the work of the previous seven years, and all of which align to our district mission and goals. First of all, we seek the continued development of a well-aligned, viable and articulated curriculum, which not only promotes physical and health literacy, but also supports national, state, and district standards. Secondly, we aim for more rigorous and relevant learning experiences through quality instruction and meaningful applications. Thirdly, is the continued development and implementation of high-quality assessments to help assess growth towards learning goals. Our fourth goal is to enhance learning through the utilization of instructional resources that really engage our students and better promote the adoption of healthy behaviors. Our fifth goal is to increase access to programs that benefit the health and fitness needs of our students. We want everyone seeing a purpose and value for enrolling in one of our courses. Our final goal is to increase positive health behaviors and decrease health risk behaviors, which ultimately have an impact on the physical, mental, social, and intellectual health of our students. Just as today, we remember the events 12 years ago on the September 11th and how the world has changed since. The next five months, we will reflect upon the changes that have occurred in the past seven years in Parkway and the field of health and physical education, and how we will respond to the ever-changing needs of this ever-changing world. Now I would like to turn it over to Mr. Nathan Tyson, who will present the process we'll follow.
All right, thank you, Ron. Board of Education, good to be with you again. It's always a pleasure. And obviously, I just, maybe before I dig And obviously, I just, maybe before I dig into my part here, I just want to recognize a few people on the, and groups of people on the front end here. First of all, health and PE, the group that we were able to get together to kind of talk about main topics and guiding questions. Ron just picked a fabulous group of folks. The amount of thought, I mean, just, you don't see all this, but the amount of thought and reflection, and it was hard to get them to actually sort of come to terms and this is what we want to study because they really had a lot of great ideas and, you know, it was just kind of hard to really say, okay, let's focus and let's just come up with our good list of main topics and guiding questions, but they did get there. And just a great group of people, so already I know that this is going to be very successful. I also wanted to just recognize Desi Kirchhofer. He coordinates program evaluations and does a lot of work and a lot of help, gives a lot of help and a lot of guidance as we're moving through the process. And then also Kevin Beckner does a lot of work too when it comes to assessment and assessment results that are needed. And you heard Ron talk a little bit about some of the assessments that health PE is engaged in and has students take. And so Kevin could definitely be called on to assist. So I just wanted to kind of recognize those folks up front. It really takes a lot of people to help these things be successful, especially, you know, since several years ago, several years back, we moved into this idea of program evaluation becoming much more collaborative. And so maybe that's where we began here on the slide, is just the fact that we really have become very collaborative, and it's for these reasons up here, to increase individual and organizational learning, to increase communication within the district, to increase stakeholder involvement. The more people we can get involved looking at these things and helping to study, and then also, you know, once the recommendations are made, then those people are going to be there and they're going to help get the word out through the district. So this collaborative process, I think, has been just a great move for the Parkway School District, and I'm happy that we've moved in this direction where we try to really bring in a lot of people to help out and assist. The important components here, you know, just when we meet with the groups and when we start to work on and sort of the initial phases of any of these program evaluations, we really do have to plan the research design. And that's really where we're starting here tonight, is, you know, here are the topics and here are the questions, these are the questions we really want to be able to answer by the time we're through with this program evaluation. So that's first. Secondly, just to make sure that there is clarity around who's responsible for what. When we make this more collaborative, then we have to kind of make sure everyone knows who's responsible for which components. And so that's also a very important part of this process. And then finally, that communication piece, getting it out, you know, obviously through the Board of Education, but then also getting it out through our schools. And that's why Ron and his group that he brought together, they're from the schools. And then, you know, when we have the parents at Project Parkway, we're getting the whole school district involved. And so the hope then is, once we go through all of this and we start to move into some recommendations and then action steps, we have all those people with us and on board and assisting as we go. So just quickly, this is kind of the idea when we look at program evaluation, I've showed this a couple of times in the past, and so we don't want to belabor it, but really just the idea that it starts up there, sort of on top with reflection, you kind of move around the wheel there and then finally get to the point where, you know, there's some direction, there's some action, where can we go from here, and then it all begins again. So just the idea that the program evaluation process is truly a cyclical process, it goes back to what Lisa was saying with the continuous improvement mentality. And here are the main topics that Ron and his delightful group established, and so we have seven of them. First and foremost is the mission, vision, and learning principles. We want to make sure that that's a critical part of what we're studying and investigating here, followed by curriculum, instruction and assessment, learning environment, program outcomes, research and development, and program advocacy. Now, as we're working through, this is a work session for the Board of Education, so as we go, you know, I'm sure you've given some thought already to this, but if you could obviously continue to be thinking, just as we move through, here's what we're thinking, here's what we're proposing in terms of our areas of study and our guiding questions, feel free at the end to critique any of the guiding questions, to give feedback on any of those guiding questions, and then to propose any guiding questions, things that we've missed. So if there's something important that you think we should learn as a result of this, make sure that you go ahead and let us know that at the end of this conversation as I just kind of work ourselves through these guiding questions. And really, we only have one guiding question for mission, vision, and learning principles. It could take quite a bit to really help to answer that question, obviously, but it's really just one question. How well does health and physical education, or HPE, how well does that program help to accomplish the mission and vision of the Parkway School District? For curriculum, we want to take a close look at the OCG or the Online Curriculum Guide. We want to determine whether or not it's truly supporting our teachers and our teaching and learning processes and that it is in fact aligned to national, state, and district standards. Does the HPE curriculum meet the needs and interests of all students? Are the HPE courses rigorous and relevant? And are the HPE course offerings equitable and available to all students? That's our curriculum section, and those are the questions that we're hoping to be able to answer. For instruction and assessment, do the available resources support teacher instruction and student learning? Is data used by our HPE teachers to assess the learning of students and then to be able to respond to the needs of the students? Do the HPE teachers use formative assessment? And how effective are our current HPE assessments? Under learning environments, are the instructional spaces adequate? Do our teachers establish and maintain good relationships with students? Are students given the opportunity to make personal choices and to be creative in their classes? Are students engaged in their classes? And do the students feel physically and emotionally safe in their HPE classes? For program outcomes, are students becoming health and physical literate? Do the HPE programs prepare students to adopt healthy, active lifestyles? Does the HPE program help students to embrace healthy behaviors and to avoid risky ones? Do HPE learning activities increase the self-esteem and confidence of students? Does the HPE program produce positive academic outcomes? And is the HPE program accessible to all students? We have three items here for the research and development portion. What is the research telling us about HPE instructional space? What is the research telling us about students' sensory and learning needs? And then what has been working for HPE programs in other school districts? And then our final area of study that we've, that we're proposing here is program advocacy. How does the HPE program promote parent involvement and strengthen the connection between home and school? Do our parents and communities support efforts to promote healthy, active behaviors? And do HPE teachers feel they receive district-level support in their quest to provide a quality And that's really it. That's what we're looking at. That's, the idea was to kind of take the goals that Ron shared and to use those as a sort of a basis for developing main topics and guiding questions. So we think we've hit on the important ones, but we would certainly be open and welcome to receive any ideas that you all have at this time.
Thank you. Start on this side? Questions?
The last time we did the program evaluation, we had separate health and PE programs, correct? So what I would kind of like you to look at is to see, are we missing anything by combining those programs? Are we missing anything that maybe we used to provide our kids that we're not providing now? Just to confirm. We also don't do the DARE program anymore, but we have created our own. Is that working better? Do we know? I mean, I understand everything can be measured, so.
You've read the book.
Something along those lines. Who was first?
Chris was.
Go ahead.
I noticed something, and I just would appreciate some clarification to understand what it means. It seemed like we've really seen some significant improvement in the district benchmark assessments for elementary. In some schools, significant, 8% increases from one school year to the next. Seems to not do quite as well in middle school and high school, but I'm just curious what would help us to have those kinds of increases.
Are you talking specifically for health PE, things like?
Yes. Yeah, some of the assessments you've done that shows tremendous improvement from the 10-11 to the 12-13 year. It's not enough just because we're actually holding PE at every day at elementary and we don't do that at high school or, you know, do we know what's making that nice increase?
Ron, do we? We don't have everyday PE in elementary school except for maybe kindergarten?
Middle school.
Middle school. Thank you. Well, that begs the question that I think we've wondered since we approved everyday PE for middle school, three or four years, three years ago? Four years ago? Is, what does the data show us? What kind of improvements is that making our middle schoolers' health? Chris, did you?
Yeah, I think implicit in many of the guiding questions, but I think, and maybe I'm just slow, but I think an explicit lens of character education and all those ideas of the cross-curricular horizontal strands and that sort of thing, certainly gym class offers a laboratory for growing leaders. So I think ought to look at being real explicit with that, and I trust there's a student services lens eyeball at the table.
A couple of slides ago, I just jotted down a quick note, something about learning and are we measuring the learning, but are we also measuring the fitness in the same context? And then the other thing was, I've always been curious as to the tie-in during, in the high school years, between our PE classes and our extracurricular sports. And those two things seem like silos to me. And I think we do one thing during the curriculum during the school day, and we do a completely different thing during the training of our athletes after school, although sometimes it's done by the same group of professionals. So my question is, is why aren't they better tied together? And I can give you a good example of that. We know, we were talking before that there are ebbs and flows in our sports team's performance over the years. And for instance, if a sports program in one of our schools is not headed in a positive direction, wouldn't it be smart to help prepare our students, maybe in the middle school years, so that when they get to high school, they've developed skills and they've increased their physicality in certain ways that would promote more success in their extracurricular activities once they get to high school?
I think you've got a lot of work here. If you can do these 26 questions, do them justice, it's a lot of work.
Gentlemen, thank you all very much. We look forward to hearing your final program evaluation. Well, I was so excited to call for the special meeting before, so let's get to it.
Madam President, I think we have a few students in the audience. Make a few recognitions before we get into the final sprint here.
Okay. Who do we have with us that are visitors tonight?
We have some college students? No?
Kevin Hilton's daughter, our assistant principal.
You want to stand up? Wait a minute.
What's your name and what troop are you from? And what are you working on tonight? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Great.
Great.
You did a good job.
Right. And how are you liking it so far? Riveting, right?
He'd like to see you get into the final sprint.
Okay, good. All right. Anybody else that we can welcome?
I'm a counselor for that badge.
Hi.
Hi. Great.
Thank you. Oh, great. Nice to have you both here. Oh, great. Good luck to you. All right. Are we good?
Thank you.
All right. Can I call for my special meeting now? Okay, go. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at Rockwood School District's Crestview Middle School located at 16025 Clayton Road. The purpose of the joint meeting is to allow both Boards of Education the opportunity to vote on a community education partnership between the districts.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. So once again, anybody who's interested in attending Crestview Middle School on Clayton Road, 7:00 p.m. a week from tomorrow, Thursday, the 19th.
Bring your popcorn.
Right. Okay.
And I am not able to attend that night, so.
Dee's going to be out of town. We'll be sure to talk about you from the board tables.
Thank you.
Okay. 16.0 call for closed meeting on September 30th, 2013. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a closed meeting on Monday, September 30th, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representative for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Appleby?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Seerfino?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. 17.0 recess, 18.0 closed meeting. We don't need a closed meeting. 19.0 may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. At this time, we will adjourn and go home.